Okay, in front of you should have the newly revised budget with the items that we discussed outlining the items that you wanted to talk about individually and make individual votes on so that we would know whether to include them in the budget or not. Does everybody have this packet in front of them? Okay, the top sheet shows those items that will need to be voted on that you requested and it all lists and references the funds, it shows the item and then what the total impact is. And those are the individual items to vote on. If you take a look at the next sheet, it shows the 2013 budget capital summary which which I think you received in the packet from two weeks ago, but we just wanted to provide that to you as again additional information. And then the third page back shows the estimated revenues for 2013 based yeah, on the levies, based upon what the levies are set at. And then the next page shows there were some changes that needed to be made. For example, I'm looking at the page that shows revenues and expenses. The revenues for the victims' rights, we did not have those revenues in the budget, so we're increasing revenues for that. And that's in the budget. And what's behind there is the newly revised budget based upon these changes that are on this page here. So it includes the victim rights, increased revenues of $12,000, and that's within the general fund. And then underneath the expenses, Alderman Arnold, I believe that you were the one that caught this at the last meeting, that we had the stipend in for the elected officials based upon your annual amount to be paid, but we did not include the meeting expense, the number of meetings. So we estimated that based on this year's, and so that amount we need to increase by $11,000. And that has the additional work holdings and everything there. So and then we, the last item under expenses is the capital equipment. There was $40,000 in there for a building, we reduced it by 20, and then took the other 20 into a capital improvement plan for possibility of including another 20 next year and including that building in there. So the changes that are on this sheet that I just finished discussing, those are included in the budget. So the document that you have there, this is a replacement document, and this is strictly for general fund, correct?
Correct.
Because the only one that had any changes was the general fund.
Now, when you added this victim's rights incoming money, I don't know if we showed all the expenses. It should be a wash.
Correct.
All the money coming in, all the money going out. I don't hope that you just
Well, it doesn't all go out exactly because part of it, um, correct, funds the victims' purposes, correct? You choose to pay the salaries of the victims.
But it will come out of the police department's deal and go over into the victim's rights fund, wouldn't it?
It's, the victim's rights is part of the general fund, so it funds that expense through the general fund.
Okay, so I just want to be clear that we got, we show the money coming in, we show all the money going out.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure exactly how you, this first segment.
Correct, it goes in and comes out.
Did you change any of the salary issues that we identified?
Just the elected officials' salaries. The other ones have been changed also, had already been the, um, we changed those in the previous version, the ones that we talked about in the animal control and the parks before. We changed those in that version before that. Those had already been changed.
So you need direct
Alderman Arnold, you were talking about victim services, that's on, the new budget here is on page 25. So if you want to look on page 25, I'll show you that in, um, in that budget, there's a total of 83,342 that's going out.
I just, you know, I want to show somehow that that money came from wherever it came.
Right, and in the revenue line that we put it in, it'll go into that revenue line that shows that it's coming in for victim's rights.
Did we ever get an estimate on cost of hours for labor for this building?
If city staff does it, it was going to be four men basically for two weeks, so we were looking at about 320 man-hours. Uh, when you look at benefits, the equipment that we needed, uh, we were looking at about $9,000.
That included the salaries as well?
Yeah, that's salary.
Labor, you had equipment.
Yes. In order to do it at this. If they had a contractor to do it, it's going to be $16,000.
It's a tough issue for me because I see this with the change in equipment, a possible need here. I see it's putting a lot of extra work on our employees to do something that's not normally part of their job. And I see a liability issue with, they're working at heights. We're talking 28 feet off the ground, which is something that they don't normally do.
Right, and I think in that, did that include a bucket truck or a lift or?
It's going to have to be able to do this type of stuff.
When you do, yeah. And I also
In my experience with putting those buildings up, two weeks even with four guys, it's a very conservative investment. And it's spent a quarter of a month putting approximately 180 building up to the building, and it was four or five of us each day.
Right. And as, one of the other items that you referenced was paying for belt and weight rates, and was there a maximum or a minimum at that point? And checking with the position of labor standards. There's no maximum amount or that the city might hit in order to make us not, anytime you're doing any type of labor work in-house, prevailing much, it's not.
I feel like this thing's come up without a lot of planning and looking for other options that are available to us. Just to bill the billing because we need, feel we need it, and a little extra money in the budget is maybe not the best approach. I'm not sure I'm even willing to put money back on the opportunity that we might decide to go ahead and go with the building in a later date. But, sorry, you know, I'm not in favor of this building at this point for a number of the reasons I've brought up. We're looking at more cost here than I think than we've even estimated to cover the expense here. And while there's a need there, I think there's more of a want than there is a need. So I'm I wouldn't be in favor of keeping the building in the, in the budget.
So where we pulled it out already, and then we've got a $20,000 allocation to capital improvement plan for the possibility of adding another $20,000 next year, where you discuss it next year. How do you feel about putting that $20,000 into a capital improvement plan, are you in favor of that, and then under reconsideration for next year?
I'm in favor of putting the money in reserves because we have some issues coming up that I know we haven't reserves back for a lot of them. But I, I think we need to be ultra-conservative here with, with the potential debt load that we're going to have to, to meet. And anything that's not really necessary needs, needs to be looked at hard before we make a decision to, to spend that money. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but that's just kind of my, my feeling.
Well, then know that on the front page that we talked about, these are the items that you would vote on. Know that on that front page, um, the second item under the capital items says fleet shop, a CIP allocation of $20,000. And that's where everyone will vote on that this evening, and so I just want to bring everyone's attention that that's what you're talking about right now.
Anyone else have, I mean, just talking about the building, anyone else have anything to add about the building?
Eventually we're going to have to do something, perhaps with new, new trucks. Tom and Tom and Ryan both in the future, they've both got good ideas with, there'd be money savers for this city. Because I deal with these entities all the time, which is the camera truck for, for camera on the sewer lines. Uh, back truck is something this city could use yesterday. And we're eventually going to, we save money by having, and we're going to have to have someplace to house and stuff. Eventually, we're going to have to have a, a building, whether we do it this year or next year.
I see 15 trucks sitting outside at a neighboring organization, community year-round. I don't see a need to park them inside. I understand the need to get them inside and work on, but I'm not sure we've worked it out, looked at all the options that, that we have, or possibilities we have there.
I, I just don't like seeing the brand-new trucks sit outside and do weathering.
Well, right now
Shelter for when we get, when we get into shelter, for a little nothing, I mean, that's just
Well, correct my wrong, wrong. The new trucks will fit in the building we currently have, correct? The park, yes, can work on them in there.
Yes.
The parking purposes, I mean, they will be out of weather.
The, yeah, the dump truck.
I'm not saying we have to do it this year, I'm just saying we need to be aware of down the road with this equipment that we were wanting to buy, the camera trucks, the, uh, the back trucks. So we're going to have to, we need to put those in undercover. Especially
And those trucks won't fit in the building we currently have?
And I know that some of our neighboring people who have vehicles outside have had a lot of trouble with the stealing of the converters. And if I'm correct, that's a very costly piece to put back, correct?
Yeah, these, these trucks wouldn't have it on.
Huh?
These trucks don't have a converter on them.
Okay, well, I didn't know, but I know that's one thing worrying me outside with any vehicles.
Well, they're enclosed in a fixed compound, isn't it?
I'm just saying, in the, not, not this year, but in the future, we're going to have to. I feel we need to cover it up. I mean, buy two new trucks, a camera truck and, and a back truck, and have a brand-new machine, or you set them outside and put them in the elements, it's just not good on any machine at all. I mean, it's done, yes, but it's not good on them. And if we can take care of, I mean, take care of them by sheltering them, also makes life expansion longer on them.
And that, that brings up my question on, on the trucks that we're looking at, trucks we're looking at buying. We've got the two F-450s down there that they've got less than 80,000 miles on, probably less than 60,000 miles on. I know they were slated for replacement, but if I owned a truck and it didn't last at least 100,000 miles, I'd be pretty disappointed. So I can understand why these heavier trucks aren't lasting longer, why, why they're, why they're, I know we use them for what we use them for, for plumbing stuff. Other people do that same thing, and the trucks run a lot more miles than what we seem to have on the trucks.
Yeah, but I, I don't think you'll find a municipality that runs a 450 that lasts any longer. I mean, the type of use that you're looking at is for landscaping company, somebody doing parking lots, that sort of thing. Just with the load that we put on the trucks with the lane miles that we push of snow, it's hard on the trucks, the salt that we're constantly throwing. I mean, you have to thank you, even with the contractor, if they, if the contractor has several contracts and they're pushing, uh, pushing snow and throwing salt during a decent storm, they may run for 24 hours straight. Our trucks will be out for three or four days straight on a decent storm.
Can I ask a question? When you, we had the water main break, is the truck you're talking about, is that the one that come out for the water main breaks? Because I know it
I wasn't, was that the 450?
Okay, because I know if the man, the, I keep an eye on my neighborhood, and they took three trips. And I thought, good, great, that was three times for the gas and the manpower, no wonder we need a big truck. Because in time, if we have anything else, you know, paying three times in the, in the hours, it would have been cheaper if we had it. That was in my favor.
Well, with the truck we have on order, we'll have two big trucks, and we'll have the two smaller trucks, the two F-50, 450s. And we were told that this one big truck would do twice the work what the 450s would do. So in essence, by the one older big truck we have, the new truck we've got coming in, it should be delivered once completed. And we keep these F-250, F-450s for at least another year or two, I think we should be able to get by and then just push this particular truck off for another year or two.
I think the problem with the other two trucks is the trans, we put two transmissions in one of them, or almost have to put a third one in, in one we put
450s?
Yeah.
We put a new transmission in the Kenworth, we replaced it in the F-450. Uh, I pushed snow in one of the 450s two years ago, and it broke down three times in a 12-hour shift. I, another year's not an option, that's the problem. I mean, we're pouring so much money into these trucks.
Well, you won't be actually using as much because you'll have the Kenworth, and you'll have the big truck, which will do majority of your pushing. You only need one of those F-450s running, I think.
No, we still have four snow routes. I mean, we're not going to be able to change to three snow routes at this point. The 450s won't push snow that fast enough. I mean, we're talking about an eight-inch bloody on an 11-foot lane, I mean, it's just, dude, it's not possible to come up with it. And we're hit, we're fine for a cul-de-sac, something like that.
I don't know, just, I just don't think we need the truck just yet. I think, and it goes along with budgeting and planning, that, that's part of the problem we had with the 450s, that we bought both of them at the same time. And so now we're at, getting close to the end of life with two vehicles at the same time, and we want to replace them with two or three bigger trucks. And I just, better planning, better budgeting, spread these things two to three years apart, so it doesn't affect the budget as much. If we go ahead and buy two trucks, boom, boom, one year right after the other. I'm not saying we're not going to get it, I'm just saying we put it off for one or two more years.
I might put a third truck off for one or two more years, but I, that's just my recommendation. I, I, I understand your point. I wouldn't be asking for it if, if I felt like we could do without it for another year.
I think my concern is that we don't even have the new truck that was ordered back in May yet. So we don't know if that's really going to meet the needs of the city or not. We don't have any experience with that, with that size of a truck. So I tend to agree with Alderman Alder, uh, Arnold, it's getting late, actually.
It's hard to say once early, so.
That, you know, until we get some experience to make sure that this is the direction we really want to go with these big trucks, instead of a bigger truck and, and have some smaller ones also to handle some, make some of the smaller jobs, that we should postpone this for another year.
Yeah, but we, I really don't look at it as we're starting out an experience. I worked for Blue Springs for seven years, and that's all they ever had, was trucks this size. And I realize we're not Blue Springs, but they had a fleet of 14 dump trucks this size. And it's, I mean, my experience up there is very clear that, that those trucks do work. So I guess my point is that I'm not blindly recommending that we have it, not knowing how it'll perform, I'm very familiar with how it performs. I mean, I drove the trucks for three years while I was there, through every snowstorm that we had. Tom, when he worked for Blue Springs, worked in a similar-sized truck. So we're, I mean, we understand what we're getting with the truck, and we understand what it's going to be capable of doing.
I think we all need to understand too, that the budget is very strained this year, very strained.
Could be more so in years to come.
Exactly.
If we don't put back a little money when we can, uh, it's going to make that, those tighter budgets harder to deal with. And, you know, we went through a time where we had to cut a lot of, a lot of the budget, and I don't want to get in that tight situation again. And I think spreading these two trucks apart by year at least would make a lot better sense. I know even if we ordered it next year, it's going to be a while before it comes in, but just the budgetary thing, spreading those costs out, I think is, just makes better sense.
I guess my concern is we've got the two icon landscaping trucks, which are made to push the snow, mountain snow, the times, the time frame of snow that they're, that they're using for. We're using, we're using trucks that aren't designed to do what they're doing. And I, I think, I don't know why we bought that size of truck to begin with, I wasn't in on that. But if we have two small trucks that we have issues with to keep breaking down, we have one truck up and running, and we have the snowfall like we did the year before last. I think we have, as much as I hate to spend money, also look at the safety factor of it, is one truck can't do north and south at the same time. We have to be able to get to people, they need us to get to them, so in my opinion, right now, that money's not logical when it comes to being safe. And then, and then two trucks have shown that they have work issues. I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not taking nobody's side, I've done my own, looking at them and, and talked to Ron and Tom, they've had issues with breaking down. So if we have one truck, and these two trucks break down, then we have one truck to do north and south.
We will have two big trucks
With that, that
When, when the new one comes in, and then we'll still have the two F-450s.
We, so we run into trouble taking, but we have three snow routes. That's what we're getting at, we're going to be, we're going to be short.
Four, actually, right now.
So we're going to be short taking care of the citizens in, in a timely manner of a, I mean, we owe the citizen an obligation to, to get things done when things happen. And I, to me, I just think
We've got three trucks now, and we've been doing four routes already.
And you had, you had the two small trucks, the big trucks, and I believe we brought in people to help us during the big snowstorm last year.
Yeah, February week.
It wasn't in that one we got it, yeah.
Well, actually, they broke down too, so we had one truck during that blizzard. And at the time, I, I mean, I realize it's two years removed, but everybody realized at that time what a crisis it was, and there was full support to get these trucks because we didn't want that to happen again. I'm just afraid that now that we're removed from that, we're not near as concerned about that problem again, and then once it happens, we don't want to watch it fix it.
This one every day. I don't want to spend nobody, no money like no more anybody else, but when it, when it looks to, when it comes to the safety side of it, I think we, we owe the citizens, you know, we have to look at that before we just go, well, it's a $100,000, $140,000 truck. I think we need to really look at that and go, can we take care of our people, our city in a timely manner like we should before we got it? I, I don't think we can, I think we need another truck.
Anyone else have anything on the truck? If you want to add.
We ordered ours in May, haven't gotten, if you order this one now, we still won't get it till next spring, next fall.
Yeah, and we, we'd actually reorder it next spring. Really, we, we have to wait for the market to come out, and we're going to purchase off of that. Uh, the truck, we do have the truck, it's actually sitting down in Oak Grove right now, they're putting the equipment on it. As soon as that's complete, I don't know, what do you have, ETA, Tom? What kind of point?
It should be due to this by first of October.
Yeah, so it'll be, but it's going to take, you know, from the time you order the truck till the time that we get it, that's fully equipped, it's going to be five to six months.
Right, I mean, if we, you're not going to use it this winter anymore.
No, no.
The one that you're asking for, but
Correct.
So you're going to have to make the 450 use them through this year.
Yeah, we're going to get rid of one of the 450s, the worst one, and then we use the GMC, we have a flatbed GMC. We have the Kenworth, the new dump truck, and then the other 450 will be the four trucks that we use for primary routes.
What's the cost of a new 450?
I, 45, 50,000, Tom?
It's a shot.
Anything else on the truck? Uh, anything else on this list that someone wants to pull off, talk about? I mean, I think one thing is going to be the speed cushions going to be discussed, because we just had a presentation over tra, traffic officers, speed cameras, speed cushions. So we need to, you know, figure out what we're doing there.
We can still put that stuff in the budget, not use it if we go this other route, right? So
From the lower, lower run rate budget for that route, or you'll that route, correct?
Right, if you decide that you want to do the traffic unit, uh, we would need, we would need to look at adding the estimated revenues for that, conservative numbers, of course. Along with the estimated cost for salary benefits, we want to put that in on the expense side, and the small portion for the equipment.
But that would be an amendment to the budget at that point, right?
Right.
Like Bob's thoughts, not take it out, leave it in there, and see how it goes, and if we need them, bottom them.
When we can decide later, when we can decide down the line, if we want to go trafficing or not with them in the budget at that point, if that's the route we want to go.
Yeah. Yeah, because if, if we just go with a, a patrol officer, I think you still need the cushions. It's just a, a psych thing to pacify people because they can't always see that officer everywhere. So I think at this point, we need to leave them in, the cushion's in for right now.
Just wait, see how things go, and bottom that later.
So do we need single motions on every single one of these items going down, or?
Um, actually, no, what I, what I'd like is a general consensus, if you don't mind, everyone going through and just telling a yea or nay on each of these items.
All right. Uh, start with the 1% COLA, do we have any discussion on that? Is everyone okay with that, are there any objections?
I guess basically, why are, why are we doing this? The budget's not coming up until the first meeting in October.
To know whether we need to put it in there or not, because
You have the ordinance on the agenda.
Yeah, and that, then when you approve the ordinance, then we know whether to include this in there or not. Because it's, while it's in there, some of you have said you wanted it on there, but you weren't sure that you wanted it in there or not. So these are the items based upon our last meeting that everyone said, we want an individual vote on these to determine whether they should stay in the budget or whether they should come out. And then when we bring it up in October, then we'd be able to have a completed budget in front of you. Does that make sense? Can I say it differently?
I guess so, but I don't, I didn't understand why we were voting for these now.
Well, you're not getting a general consensus, you're not really voting for it because you're still going to have to vote for the budget. But this gives me a general consensus as to whether, if, if all of you are against the COLA, or the majority of you are against the COLA, I then go in and, and will pull it out of the budget so that it's not included when you see it in October. Yeah, basically, this is just direction as to what you want to see in the budget and what you don't want in the budget.
Yeah. So is anyone having issues with the COLA increase? Okay with that?
Should be bigger. Should be bigger.
Yeah.
If you get right down to it, I mean, that was where I was leading with some of these, pushing some of these things off, and trying to get that up a little bit more, but
Well, we can revisit that if something, you want to go back to that, if something is removed?
Okay.
And they can direct staff to look at, if there's another number there, if we remove something. Let's do that then, come back. Everyone okay with the accounting position upgrade? Any concerns, issues there?
I don't know if we need two people at accounting level. I know it helps to have someone to lead with, I think your accounting clerk can do that just as well, as an accountant. I think we've been pretty generous with a lot of salaries here lately, and, uh, at least at upper levels. The guys that are down in the trenches, you know, they're only seeing 1%.
Um, this accounting position is, is one of the trenches, and Um, this accounting position is, is one of the trenches, and common sense for the additional duties that this position is taken on.
I just, I don't see the need for it. It's a bit of a change.
Okay. Anyone else feel, felt no need for this?
What were you asking, Eric?
Accounting, the accounting position upgrade?
I'm fine with it.
Everyone else all right? Bob, okay? All right? Okay, it looks like we have majority. Uh, the increase to the, raising the finance to mid-level? Everyone all right with that one? Over there? Okay? They all, you're okay with that one, or?
Yeah.
Uh, HR director agreements?
What is that?
That's the agreement that we formed with the, with that position. What was it last?
Last budget.
Last budget. Say we raised so much last budget, and we're raising so much this budget. But that was done under agreement at the time, right? So, we can, can even be removed.
Yeah, these two items, basically, the board have already signed and agreed to.
So, I don't think they can be removed, can they?
Not really.
Okay. Uh, next item, we're down to capital, then, communication server.
This is the item that's the, only if needed, that's why it has the asterisk there next to it, um, if the phone system dies, we would likely replace that phone system, but only if it dies.
Is that okay to put them in there? All right. Uh, fleet shop allocation, twenty thousand for the fleet shop, kinda talked about this a little bit, but we don't really see everyone's hats. Scott, you all right with that?
Yeah, I'm all right with the CIP twenty thousand.
I'm okay with it.
Are we just putting it in then as CIP allocation, not specifying building?
Um.
Or how do we want? 'Cause I know Alden Arnold will think, hey, I can sort of specify it for the building, like I did next year, but I think you're okay with the twenty thousands at the side, right?
Well, you know, if you're putting back twenty thousand, you're gonna figure on three-year, yeah, 'cause I think you're gonna be close to sixty thousand dollars when this is all said and done, and, so, you know, if you're gonna put twenty back this year, you're either gonna come up with forty next year, to go with it, or, or put back another twenty next year. Put it up third year, but I think that's just too conservative.
Yeah, and we can, you know, as we get closer, and next year comes about, we can go back to that again. We'll update our figures for next year, based upon the economy and, and the cost we create at that time.
Not now.
Okay, so we're okay with the twenty thousand for this year in CIP then? All right. Uh, next two items under police vehicles. Are we okay on police vehicles?
Uh, they're all blank. The, the agreement to replace vehicles.
Verb.
Verb, thank you, yeah. That's in the verb, right? That's what it does.
The two vehicles.
Yeah.
We okay with police vehicles?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, next one's front mountain mower for the park. We okay for the mower for the park? Okay. Uh, snow plow. I know we had this talk last time about the snow plow, but I think-
Additional information that came back is that the blades that we have don't work with the equipment that we have, so the plow, in essence, is still needed.
And we're gonna put this on F-250, that's labeled underneath the parks departments? So, we're gonna take this truck out, using it to play cul-de-sacs and so forth?
Um, no, in essence, if we're looking-
Well, that was part of what the justification was, that we're gonna use it to do parking lots of stuff.
Yeah, parking lots, right.
And then help out with cul-de-sacs.
All the way through.
So, I see it on the way of these F-450s, if we put a plow in front of them, we're gonna be tearing the truck up.
Now, I, I think when we're talking about snow plow, you know, other than our parking lots and so forth, it would be on very normal places, and would probably be things like your cul-de-sacs, um, but it wouldn't be, there's much of any snow plowing up the road roadways for the service.
We've always used the Bobcat to do that before, haven't we, Jeff?
And it's resulted in checking to switch out peaking in the bucket, and our tread getting worn down, curb damage, asphalt damage, and taking two to three times longer to get parking lot cleared, just Bobcats are much smaller.
My experience of running them, though, they're a lot more renewable, should be able to shield it and do the job a lot quicker. I know there's a comfort level for the individual sitting in the truck versus the Bobcat, if it hasn't got any closed cage, but.
Actually, my department has had to rather use the Bobcat to clear their stuff, but we'll probably still use the Bobcat in tight corners and areas that the plow won't get, but we'll be able to-
You're talking about still use the Bobcat to bucket, or, does it make any difference to put a plow on it? I don't know.
Because even when we push the snow, we get the parking lot cleared a lot more, but you still have the storm, the snow push-up, and the curves, so it'll be places where we'll actually have to lift some of the snow up off the parking lot in certain areas, but ninety percent of our snow, we will agree with this truck and the new plow.
Everyone stopped with Bob-
Sounds to me like we've got what we need to do the job, this is more of a want than a need.
Anyone else feel?
I, I deal with Bobcats every day, and I gotta agree to Shannon on tearing your curves up, they, they do, they do beat your curves up. I mean, it's, it's, they are our undercurbs, I will stand by them on that, 'cause we, that's what we do. You got, and it's bad enough when you can't see a curve, and when it's covered in snow, makes it even worse. I agree with him on that part of it.
Nancy, you okay with plow?
I am.
Mike, you feeling it, Scotty?
Do we have a plow for the Bobcat?
No.
I, I gotta use the Bobcat at work, we got plow and a bucket to understand for both of them.
Yeah.
You're looking about the same amount a month, I mean.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the plow we're looking at for the truck is not only wider, but taller. Because I think part of the problem is, is that now the time it takes us to clear, and to go back to do it again, it's snow events still occurring. So, a lot of it has to do with time efficiency, needing more done quicker, um, but then ultimately, it's savings when it comes to maintenance on vehicles and maintenance on your parking lot.
Yeah, and I'm not a hundred percent sold on this, that I tried to get through last time, and it, it, 450s aren't big enough to run, to do it, now you're kinda putting it on a smaller truck.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not looking at doing streets, I mean, this is for a community center parking lot, city hall parking lot, park parking lots.
That's still a lot of, a lot of area, a lot of weight setting on their trucks.
Yeah, and, and I can't speak of, of the rigors of snow plowing on roadways, but ours generally is, we're not generally moving at as fast, um, you know, and it's a pretty familiar parking lot for these guys, um, so I, I don't see us putting the stress on this, because we would have to be out on roadways where there's snow.
So, you kinda wanna wait on that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Alden Nedley?
Okay.
Alden West?
Okay.
Okay. Uh, oh, water tank replacement? Let's go cold water.
This is the one for the community center to reduce from two tanks to one, right? Because one huge break.
It'd be three tanks to two.
To two. Costs more to repair your existing situation.
Yeah, yeah.
Everyone okay with hot water tank? All right. Uh, dock truck?
Not interested. Just don't think that anybody needs to push it all up a year.
Wait, you wanna wait till you ride over to Alden's?
Okay.
Okay, Alden's gone.
Verdings go out. I'm, I'm not saying yes or no, is I.
Okay. Alden's potting?
Now, this is the third truck, that's it, we're done for now, so that's, or the second.
The second. Alden, say if you're full. I guess we can put it in there, and we can always remove that line out and come vote time around. That's, okay, there it is. Uh, used asphalt roller? Anyone okay with that?
There's a bunch of busts around here and back in the house.
Too many larger, larger packages.
It also has the ability, as we progress in doing trails in-house, we'll be able to utilize it for our trail system, so it has a double purpose.
Sorry, we're gonna split it over too far this morning.
Uh, traffic counters? Okay, those?
For these, uh, these are help you guys figure out where your bus, your traffic is. Speed, doesn't tell you the speed though, does it? But just, you just-
It does. Yeah, this'll tell us that this, it's, we're having a problem right now with Long, we're doing the traffic study, but it took so long to do it, and that's because we only have two functioning traffic counters, so these counters, adding these will help us be able to get around to the different problem areas quicker.
We had any problem or anything today?
Uh, it seems to be, at least once a month I hear about it here, yeah. I thi- I think probably in the last three months, we've given, record four different traffic study areas, between Montana Ridge, Long Drive, Edgewood.
Montana Ridge is, and most, well, a lot of it is just speeding issues, though, when you're doing that, you see about the four-way stops, that we talked about.
Well, the, the traffic counter's really the only way to get true speed, because people don't realize it measures speed, and when you put the radar trailer out there, they see that, and they slow down. Um, you just have the tubes running across the road, they don't, they think we're counting traffic, they don't realize we can calculate speeds, and so that's really where we get our true speed from.
Is that something we can eliminate with the traffic county then?
No, I doubt it.
I'm just checking.
Speed hubs maybe, yeah, but not traffic counters, we need to do this for engineering.
Engineering, just like the four-way stop on Montana Ridge, and see if that's gonna, if that would even fall.
Okay. Uh, speed cushions?
Now, this could come out if we decide on everything else, right?
Or we could leave them in there?
I mean, leave it in there.
Either way, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Everyone all right with those? And then I said we would revisit the COLA, but we don't really know if anything's being removed yet, 'cause we're still kinda, so, did you have an idea what percentage we're looking at, Alden Arnold, Ald- Arnold one now?
Yeah.
It's getting worse, it's getting late, right on the west.
Based on the plan that they suggested, I'd, I'd like to see two percent, which would double that number. That's why I was leaning toward pushing the truck back, and, actually, I looked at the communications coming out, the truck coming out, and the building coming out, which would put about two hundred and twelve thousand dollars back in reserves that could be there for possible needs that we could see coming up in the next year, that are unforeseen, but yet still on the horizon.
If we take that communication stuff out, and the phone system fails, though, you're stuck, you're gonna spend that money anyway. I do with this wouldn't be spent, it would just be allocated in event that that occurs.
I haven't known any issues with our phone system yet, and I know the system here's same age as the building, and this building's newer than any of the fire stations that I've worked out of, that have a similar system in it, and haven't had issues.
Is this something that you could do the one percent, wait till the end of the year, and make sure the phone system doesn't crash on us, and if it doesn't, do another one percent at the end of the year?
That'd be go toward the next fiscal year, though.
Well, unless you did it as a, as a home's check or something, you can do that.
Well, we're gonna pull, we're gonna pull the shed out, there, and it's forty, forty thousand here, and put twenty thousand in the, uh-
CIP?
Excuse me?
CIP?
The CIP, then, they got twenty thousand, they add two, your one percent. We could do that, you wanna kick that number up? You do, they got twenty thousand, raise it one percent.
We can look at that.
And still put twenty thousand in CIP.
This one, and ask how, how's everyone feel about that one percent going to two percent? You're, you're, you're okay with two percent? Alden Shaker?
Uh, like I said, I, I-
Yeah, okay.
I, we're gonna move, we're gonna move things around where we can give employees a raise and take something out, I, our employees deserve a raise, I'm not, I've never said that, just-
I'm for the, I'm for the, go ahead.
Two percent. Alden's gone.
I'm for it, and I'm tired of losing them to everybody, yeah.
Alden?
I'm okay with it, I, I still think we should have more discussion about that truck. I hate to see the truck go, and then we get in a big snow vent, obviously, this year's not gonna matter, next year, we, well, this year, if we have a big snow vent-
We're not officially taking the truck out yet, right?
No. Correct, and, and the other part is, is the truck is, is actually in, is not in the general fund, so, which is where the majority of your salaries come from.
We could talk about the truck a little more normal.
Pardon me?
So, don't we have another meeting tomorrow on that?
No, actually, your meeting tomorrow is about the race track.
We could, we could have been into the ad conversation about the truck, yeah. Would that give you a little more time to think about it?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's, let's plan on doing that then, let's become an engine tomorrow to include conversation about the truck on there. I think everything else is pretty much good.
Okay.
And then, did, did you wanna look and see about the two percent, see if that's-
Yeah, let's see what that's gonna be, the overall funds, and see if it was as short as it appears.
Okay. Did you have anything else you need for us then on budget?
Nope, that's it.
Anyone else have anything for budget tonight then? Where we can, we can always bring up tomorrow, this general budget discussion? All right. Go ahead, move on to city attorneys report then?
They'll need to report, your honor.
Uh, city administrator staff reports?
Uh, we have one item tonight from the finance director. When we started talking about the new utility billing system, you had indicated that you would like to offer the citizens the opportunity to do either actual volume for their sewer bill or rent average, so I have prepared a draft ordinance and form for that, and I'd just like to hand it out so you guys have time to look at it, before we can take it to the agenda in October. So, that's what I'm handing out, it will be the new ordinance, the form, and behind it, I'd attach the current ordinance and code for those areas.
So, you think you're gonna have this done, and everything works the way, before January now?
Yes.
Wow. You're, uh, three months ahead of schedule?
That's all we have at this time.
Okay. Uh, board of aldermen reports comments? Alden Arnold?
I think I've said nothing.
All right. Alden West? Alden Nedley?
One thing occurred to me while we were sitting here talking about this, and I know we haven't visited our capital improvements plans for some, for some time, I know it's been a little bit. Would it be, you know, we're talking about this building, Alvin Public Works, would it be worthwhile or valuable? Would it be worthwhile or valuable to take a, maybe a more comprehensive look at what they have over there from a building standpoint and facility standpoint? And rather than piecemeal, you know, a shed here and a building there and this and that, you know, look at something more long-term. And maybe we, we don't spend the money on these little onesie-twozie forty by forty sheds. I mean, I know it'd be down the road that we'd be talking this, but you know, we may see ourselves in a situation where we have to do something down like that. That's all I have.
Alden Scotty?
Nothing with this, Doug.
Alden Potten?
Yes, I had a gentleman call me, I suppose, when Brian. There are two homes on theme that are in discussion about the wall that they're putting up, the sound barrier. And they need to have this documented for their, one of them is selling the house and a realtor from Modoc. And Modoc seems to be taking time because I believe this is going on our second to third, beginning of the third week. So if we could, I would like to make sure it's on, you know, that this gets done. Thank you.
Alden Shaker?
Uh, I wanted to congratulate Ryan on his new members of the family.
He is a cutie.
Baby, baby boy, seven?
Seven, two.
Seven, two.
Already a cheap little player.
Oh, yeah.
I just have one thing. I want to congratulate our city clerk on becoming a certified city clerk. So I just want to congratulate her on that and just totally not to do it if I did anyways.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Uh, I was going to do a cake too, but I don't think she would have brought it through to me. Anyways, uh, that is all I have, and we already had our executive session. Someone has something else for? No. All right, see you now. Move on to adjourn.